Started. Are you ready, Mark?
I'm ready.
Okay. Just wanted to say good afternoon to everybody here. We're glad you're here to this candidate forum for the Richardson City Council. We are not going to take any time to do a lot of introductions because we're going to leave as much time as we can for the candidates. So if I would like for the candidates to do a two-minute introduction of themselves and their campaign, and we will start alphabetically with this one. And Daniel, would you go first?
Absolutely. Thank you. And nice to see a few unfamiliar faces. I've seen a lot of familiar as well. But I'm Daniel Burdette, and I'm running for city council place six. Lived in Richardson for 20 years, the first decade, lived over in Duck Creek neighborhood. And then for the last decade, my wife and I have lived on Shadywood Lane in Cottonwood Heights neighborhood. We love the amenities and services that our city provides and really want to play a part in keeping the city a great place to live and work. My service and leadership training really began with my days at A&amp;M. I was in the Corps Cadets and played trumpet in the Aggie Band and served as the executive officer of my outfit of about 90 cadets. It continued after I graduated from A&amp;M with a degree in computer science. I moved to Richardson and service continued with the First United Methodist Church where I've served as singing choir and have served as the chancellor of the choir president, served on church council and a few other committees around the church. And then within the city, having met people through the church within the city, I've volunteered for over a decade now with the Wild Power Arts Music Festival and have served on its executive steering committee for the past six, most recently as its chair-elect. And I'm confident it will be back. But I'm also a member of Leadership Richardson Class 28 and have served on the LR Alumni Association Board of Directors. Most recent position was as its president. And 2015, city council appointed me to be a Parks Commissioner, which really taught me a lot about the city. And by visiting all 38 parks all over the city, recreation facilities, and of course, miles and miles of trail. I've been attending city council meetings and goal-setting sessions, budget-planning meetings really for years and know what the time commitment that I'm now stepping up for. So I would hope to serve as your next city council member for place six and would appreciate your vote on May 1st for Daniel Burdette. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that information. Okay, so Joe, you're next.
All right. Thanks, Liz, and thanks everyone for hosting this wonderful event. My name is Joe Corcoran. I'm running for Richardson City Council in place four. I went to Apollo, I went to Burkner. And after Texas Tech, I went to Texas Tech and got two master's degrees in business, one MBA and one Master of Science in Business Administration, and then moved back here. I work in corporate compliance. I'm an auditor. And you know, I decided to, I decided to run for council because I saw where our redevelopment objectives are going. I saw a lot of opportunity for my skill set to be on council, right? And to add a lot of value there. In my volunteer space and in the nonprofit world, I've worked a lot in grant-making regionally. And we talk about where Richardson's needs are with the IQ and redevelopment and the business community. I feel like looking regionally is really important. So having connections and a regional mindset with how we do projects is one important aspect. And the other important aspect is the grant-making part, where we take other people's money, so tax dollars, right, and city government and the nonprofit spirit donations, and we decide how to deploy them most effectively to achieve the maximum result, right? And that's a skill set that I've honed and taken leadership classes for and everything. And I think that that is an amazing skill set to have when you're on city council. And especially when you're talking about spending money to help businesses become more attractive to Richardson, help them grow and thrive. So all that to say, my name is Joe Corcoran again. I'm running for Richardson City Council in place four, and I hope you guys choose to vote for me. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Joe. Marilyn, you're up next. Marilyn, will you take yourself off mute? I should always say that at the very beginning. I forget that, too.
That's an elementary step that we always forget.
Well, after another year of this, maybe we'll all remember.
Oh, my gosh. Over 40 years ago, we moved to Richardson. We became really involved with the schools and the neighborhoods. It was really through Leadership Richardson that helped to get, make me focused, more focused on where I could really contribute to this city. I was the first appointed to the Parks Commission. And then in 2010, I moved to, I was appointed to the Planning Commission where I was there for 10 years. Now, that commission requires a lot of time, two meetings each month, and plenty of extra reading. Oftentimes, I would actually go to the sites to really look at up close what was being requested. Studying zoning requests plus the many areas of redevelopment was challenging, but I enjoyed it. And I really miss those challenges. Those years have helped me to gain the expertise and the knowledge that I will use on council. I am by nature a good listener and a problem solver. I want to be your advocate and I want to be your voice on council. I want to reconnect neighborhoods for Richardson. I'm Marilyn Frederick, candidate for place six, Richardson City Council. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Marilyn. Mr. Kepner, you're up.
Thank you. So I'm Kyle Kepner, longtime, actually lifetime resident of Richardson, born here in 1970. Started off in Duck Creek and ended up in Canyon Creek. You know, I'm a small business owner here, so I understand the impact of property taxes, both not only on my home but on my business. I'm raising two children in Richardson. And so I bring a perspective of a parent of school-aged children, a small business owner, and a lifelong resident. I've seen this city change in 50 years. And you know, I remember where, when I lived in this neighborhood, moved in this neighborhood, I was one of the last homes to be built in Canyon Creek. But there were still farms scattered around. And redevelopment is such an important aspect in our city and versus development back then. And we need to make sure that we are doing it in a smart way, making sure that we take our neighbors and surrounding businesses' views first when we decide any zoning cases and that we need to make sure that we are keeping the ship steady. We have a great city management here in Richardson. Our government has done well in the past 50 years since I've been here, and we need to continue to do so. And so I've enjoyed serving for two years on council in place four and would love for everyone to reelect me. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. And then Mr. Sensoul.
Liz, I don't see that he's joined us.
I don't see so either. I was looking and didn't want to miss it, but I don't see it either. So we will, if it comes in, then we will ask him to join us and give his two minutes worth. But right now, let's get started on some questions. And so the answering will be about a minute, if you take just a minute to answer the question. And then we will go to the next question, and we will start with Daniel for this first one, then again, go in alphabetical order. And so the first question is, what should the city do to support and enhance the business climate in Richardson? Daniel, you want to start?
Sure. Thank you. I think the city has done a very good job of that thus far. So I don't really see a huge need for change. One thing I do really like to see is the renovation that's going on, obviously in the core and in the innovation quarter, especially really city being proactive and taking the initiative to relax zoning where it's appropriate so that we can start to foster relationships. Obviously, the chamber is very involved with that process and partnerships with UTD that was recently announced and really kind of drive that, the catalyst for that area. I love the innovative spirit of Richardson. It's been there since the TI and the Collins Radio folks were around. So we want to keep that going, whether it's, if it is relaxing zoning. Obviously, we need to be mindful of surrounding neighborhoods if there are adjoining neighborhoods, but where appropriate. Removing barriers is good to allow for that redevelopment to occur.
Thank you. Joe, if you want to unmute and answer, would you like me to ask the question again?
Oh, I got it. So, you know, there are two, I think, just to keep it within a minute, and I could go on 30 minutes on this, right? There are two facets, right? There's the retail that we have, and then I think that there is the non-retail businesses, right? More of our manufacturing and light industry and things like that. With the retail, I feel like that that's more of an activities-based sort of thing. So that's a lot of the promotion, right, of our wonderfully ethnically diverse small businesses that we have. A lot of promotion on, you know, different themes that we can do around town and really championing and branding Richardson as kind of this destination location, right? And doing all sorts of corresponding events, you know, with the city, property owners and chamber to make that happen. With the manufacturing, kind of the more industrial aspect, that's really where you get into that grant-making that I was talking about in my introduction statement. And I think that's the city providing, you know, smaller amounts of funds in very specific and intentional ways to catalyze different areas of town. You know, a good example is the Velvet Taco business, right, that opened up off Campbell. You know, the city provided, your Chapter 380 agreement, money for traffic studies and renovations there. And we're hoping that that Velvet Taco kind of brings that whole area up. And I guess that's a retail business, so maybe that's not the best example of manufacturing per se. But you know, things like incentivizing, the Duck Creek Trail is a good example for the manufacturing sector, right? Finding ways to beautify that area, bring more businesses in and eliminate perceptions of vacancy and just make it a more appealing place for companies to move in.
Great. Thank you. Marilyn?
Both of my predecessors have very adequately covered this subject matter. I do believe, though, that we should continue to support funding for economic incentive programs such as the Texas Enterprise Fund, Texas Tourism, and Texas Music. I think that also an important part is to continue the small business development centers that have proven to be excellent resources for our forward thinkers and companies that may be attractive to want to, think they want to move here. I think the IQ area is one of the best hopes we have for spurring on our development. And I'm so excited about that development. I guess I would say, you know, I'm a small business person, too, so I get affected as everybody else does when it comes to taxes and all of that. So I'm with, I'm with y'all on trying to do the best we can and oppose any legislation that would try to change what, a good thing that we have going here, really do. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Kyle?
Thank you. Well, so this is something that can be, we could talk about forever. One of the things that has been failed to mention is that, you know, we have done such a good job on the business end and with a lot of thanks going towards the chamber. We work really close to the chamber. I pride myself on going to as many ribbon cuttings as I can go to. But one thing we haven't talked about is the city has managed in their, in drawing business here that 61% of our property taxes are paid for by corporations. And that's pretty much unheard of in this area. And we need to continue to do that so we take the burden off our homeowners. And it's such a, it's such a good ratio, but it can always get better. And in fact, it's grown 2% since we've been on council in the last two years. So developing business, everything we do is to attract more residents and business, parks, road maintenance. One of the things in the next bond, I'm talking fast because we're running out of time, but is bridging the two sides of Richardson together, east and west, to make it one more congruent city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I still don't see Eryphon. Does any, Bill? No? Okay. So the next question then, and we'll start with Joe on this one, is that the city has and will continue to make significant infrastructure investments in the core downtown and the IQ. What else should the city do to support entrepreneurs and businesses in these areas?
And if you want to take maybe a minute and a half, that's fine. I think we're going to have extra time.
Great.
And I think Eryphon has joined us.
Oh, good. So we'll go through this question and then we'll get with Eryphon.
So Liz, you may need to repeat the question who was directed to.
Okay. This question, we'll start with Joe, is the city has and will continue to make significant infrastructure investments in the core downtown and the IQ. What else should the city do to support entrepreneurs and businesses in these areas?
Okay, yeah, I think that obviously continuing to provide phenomenal city services to all of our different industrial and business, sort of business centers is important. I think that when the city works to attract businesses, what we should also do is really work on focusing on attracting businesses that can provide sort of synergistic properties with each other. That way, it's good for the city. We increase, you know, our commercial sales tax, right? But at the same time, we're also letting businesses almost, it creates an even more attractive climate for them because they have a lot of the services that they need right in their, in their area. So when we look at how we redevelop either the core, right, or the IQ especially, it's all about, again, being intentional with the actions that we do as a city and the money that we spend and the type of businesses that we go after so that we can really kind of provide a sustainable area. So when our entrepreneurs move in, you know, they know that they have, they have a lot of resources there for them, not just from the government, but from the private sector as well.
Okay. Thank you. Marilyn, would you like to answer this question?
Being the second or third one, it's almost tagging on the brilliance of the people before you. I'm just going to talk from a Realtor's point of view. As a Realtor, I'm often challenged with clients that want city services and want to know that their city, that they're thinking about moving to is one that is financially stable and sound and that they feel safe in. So I think all of those services, safety, stability, and looking nice are all definite things that Richardson already offers. But I would, I would love to see, continue to see even better stability in our, in our city and in our city services. I think there's areas that can always use improvement. And I'm, I'm here to look at those, identify those areas and work on it as best I can. I've studied smart cities for two years as a national program. And I'm excited to think about what else we could do in our city. You know, we know we're good, but we can be even better. And that's, that's what I, my goal is.
Thank you. Kyle? Let me know if you want me to read the question again.
No, I'm good. So, you know, I can answer this in lots of different ways. But you know, we've always been a forward-thinking city and looking not just two years down the road, but five, 10, 15, 20, as evident by the dark rail that goes through. We have four stops on the red line. We're going to have two stops on silver line. Those kind of decisions affect small businesses every day. And I, as a small business owner that has a retail shop, I can tell you that the, the things that the councils did in the 80s and 90s affect my business today. And we need to make sure that we continue to do that as well as looking at the things that have maybe just been completed or completed a few years ago and making sure those developments are still operating in the way that we had envisioned them, you know, five, 10 years back. And so, you know, being boots on the ground, interacting with our small business people. You know, I participate on the retail committee with the council, so I work closely with the chamber as well on that. And, you know, they are very active in reaching out to these small businesses acting. And if there's any, if there's any issues, they let us know, and we actually go in and also offer any help that we can as well. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Eryphon, I don't, were you able to hear the question? And before you would answer it, if you could introduce yourself, so whichever order you'd like.
I appreciate it. I apologize. I had some technical problem. And I've looked forward for this event so much, but anyway. Well, my name is Eryphon Shamsul. I'm running for Richardson City Council Place Six. 29 years ago, I came to America as a student with no family and little money. And now I have, you know, a wonderful, wonderful family. And also I own and operate my own civilian engineering consulting business specializing in municipal infrastructure. And giving back to the community is so important. So 15 years ago, I moved to Richardson and I got involved with many community activities. And I took every single opportunity to serve our beautiful community and beautiful city. So I'll go back to your question that you had, that I think the question was what else city can do to, I guess, something about the main street. Can you repeat the question a little bit?
Well, sure, of course. It just talked about that the city has made some significant infrastructure investments in the core and downtown and the IQ. And what else does the city need to do to support entrepreneurs and businesses in these areas?
Okay, that's a great question. And you know, this is what I always think, that you know, when you want a certain type of butterfly in your backyard, you want to put, you know, the right kind of trees and the plants and flower beds so that eventually you will have beautiful backyard. And I think our city has done a wonderful job. The chamber has done a great job. And the things they have done many years ago and continuously updating, and that's where benefiting from this. I think we are on the right track. I think I look really, I'm very optimistic what's going to be coming up there. I think so far, safety is one of the issue I think that has been taken care. The roadway infrastructure has been, is being taken care in those areas. So I think we have the right place, right things for the right business to come there.
Great. Thanks so much for that. So now we have a question from one of our audience. Oh, Daniel, Daniel, sorry, sorry. Thank you for waving. I was going to get my list too fast. Please go ahead.
Sure. Yeah. So I think specifically the question was what can the city do to support those small businesses and entrepreneurs? And I think traffic is the key, and I don't mean cars driving by, which is what Beltline has been for 20 years. It's just a pass-through for people kind of going through. But if we can, the city can contribute to connectors and kind of back to the smart city concept that Ms. Frederick mentioned. You know, really is about making cities walkable and locomotile friendly. So would love to see some tie-ins not only in the core and Lockwood districts, but maybe some improved sidewalks up to Chinatown to really kind of, and beyond that, the IQ, to really kind of make it cohesive. And maybe, maybe it is some additional parking. And I'd love to see what we're seeing on the northwest corner of Greenville and Beltline where an old building is now a parking lot with some trees and, but a place that people can come to park and spend time in the district and not just drive to one specific destination and then get in their car and drive to a different destination. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for that type of infrastructure. And of course, one thing that I personally like seeing is the requirement for public art for certain projects of certain sizes. And so again, just making the core district and the citywide district and et cetera places to be and neat things to see just along the way.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so then the next question, first of all, let me encourage our viewers here to please submit questions. So far, I've only had one, and surely there are more questions than that. So I have a few of my own, but I really prefer audience questions. And one of the audience questions asks, how can the city help HOAs protect neighborhoods from negative effects of short-term rentals? Now, we will start with Marilyn on this one.
Oh, wow. VRBO and all that kind of good stuff. I really feel that we probably need to pass some laws, if you will, regarding regulating those short-term rentals. We do rental registration for homes that are rented and some, and owners draw back on that. They think that we're intruding, but we're really not. We're protecting them as much as we're protecting the neighbors. So I really feel we are going to have to address short-term rentals with some kind of rules or laws, if you will, in this city. The code enforcement people are probably going to have to take a little bit bigger part in this, but it's to protect our whole city. So we've got to, we've got to get that in place as well as not only just VRBOs and things like that, but what about the number of people that actually live in a property? I was at a wonderful condominium associate, or meeting last night, or they were just having a social hour. But they did bring that up, that what about the fact that they know that there are four people in this small two-bedroom condo or more, four or more, that are not related? And how does the city respond to that? Right now, they, they could do better. The city could do better with that. So that's, that's an area that's going to need, need some looking into. And as a Realtor, I certainly have expertise in identifying some of those properties. Sometimes you can tell them from the outside when they have five cars sitting in the parking, in the, on the curb. So there's, there's a lot of areas where I think the city will have to do more of a management position than they are right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle?
So it's an issue that we've talked about. I'm not a big fan of over-regulating homes or people in this city. However, I think there's a big distinction between someone that just rents their house out for a weekend and someone that rents it out on a full-time or half-a-month basis. I wouldn't be opposed to having some sort of ordinance that requires that if you rent your house out, you know, more than half the month, that you have to follow the same rental programs that we have in our city already. And to address Marilyn, we do actually have a limit on the number of unrelated adults that can live in a household together. And that is something that is brought up, needs to be brought to code enforcement if anyone knows of something, a situation like that, so that we can handle it. Dallas is currently looking at Airbnb and VRBO, and those two companies are extremely litigious. So it might be in our best interest to see how they handle it and take on the legal fees so we don't have to have our taxpayers do the same, be a little redundant, especially in the same area. But I'd like to see what happens in Dallas, and then maybe we can formulate a better plan for our homeowners and citizens in Richardson.
Great. Thank you for that. Eryphon?
All right. Yeah. Now, well, that's something new definitely coming up nowadays. I have been complained from some residents, my neighborhood area. So, yeah, I think there, if there is some regulation comes up, ordinance come up, come up from the city, that would be great things. And I, city staff does really good job about maintaining the code and other things, enforcing the code about the number of people that can be live, you know, start in a house or condo. If they see more people, they do take the step. I have seen those things. So I think they are doing their best. And I think we can, I, you know, we can look at the other city, what they have done regarding this kind of thing, so we can learn from them. And I think it's time to take some step into, into that issue. Thank you.
Okay. Daniel?
Yeah, this is an interesting question. And as an Airbnb homeowner, I am familiar with the situation. Our Airbnb does in a, on a three-acre lot in northern New Mexico, so we're not adjoining right next to, next door neighbors on that. But I agree with Mr. Kepner that, you know, the, we don't want to over-regulate, but certainly if, if we're not already, and it's given me some homework to go look into. If we're not already requiring a registration process like we do with annual rental properties, then that certainly can be something that we look into, making sure that we understand who.
that we understand who owns the property and, and who needs to be contacted if we, if code violations are observed. So, you know, Airbnb, at least in New Mexico, they, they collect hotel motel tax though on, on stays there. So, you know, I know our hotels and motels are, are struggling right now and our tax revenue is down from that. So, you know, having that as a, a source of revenue wouldn't hurt, but of course, we also don't want to squeeze our hotels too hard by having that. So that's, that's kind of a tough issue and I definitely need to do a little more research on what our current rules are. Great question, thank you.
Thank you. And Joe?
Yeah, so I mean, this is something that it kind of falls into a broader thing that I hear all the time. Doesn't matter if I'm in Richland Park or if I'm in Cheryl Park or, or by Breckenridge, you know, people, people have issues with either the short-term rentals or halfway homes or just overcrowded rental units in general. And, you know, whenever I identify a trend, I come from the private, you know, the business world, whenever we identify a trend in corporate compliance and we go in, what we do is we, the first thing we do is we pull the procedures, right? And we look for the right amount of specificity in them. We look to make sure that they're covering what they need to cover. And, you know, as was mentioned earlier, the world changes at a very rapid pace. And as we get more short-term rentals, I think that without going into a ton of specifics on, on this call, right, looking at the code and, and breaking it out and, and finding the nuance there is going to be really important and, and figuring out how we enforce it, right? I had this conversation the other day with someone who was telling me about an overcrowded rental catty-corner to his house. Do we just send one code enforcement officer over there to, to knock on the door and, and tell them to, you know, that they're breaking code when there's, you know, one of him and ten people in the house? You know, looking at specificity and really laying out procedures for every single situation as much as we can is going to be important. And that's something that we can't complete with a one-minute answer, but we can certainly do on council and before thinking about.
Right, okay, thank you. Our next question is from another one of our attendees here. And it is, what is the most important infrastructure improvement for Richardson over the next couple of years? So looking forward, what is going to be the most important infrastructure improvement? And we will start with Kyle on this one.
So, you know, that's an easy question. The answer is always streets. I mean, infrastructure in our town, it, it's always a street issue. We have sixty-five to ninety-five and we had three hundred and thirty percent growth in this city and all those streets are coming under disrepair. We have currently, out of all the streets that are rated poor, the repairs needed to replace those are two hundred and eighty million dollars. It's, you know, our entire city budget's three hundred million. So we can see that we're up against a, a ball on this one. We need to make sure that we are fixing the, the streets in the right way and maintaining our good streets. You know, in the eighties, they took a lot of our streets and put asphalt overlay because that's what was done at the time. And over the years, those roads have deteriorated faster than anything else. So we are pushing or we are discussing our bond right now and it looks like we're going to have the largest streets, alley and sidewalk bond that we have had in the, in the history of Richardson. And it's something that we're going to continue to have to do and to catch up. Unfortunately, with SB two, we're kind of handcuffed to our growth that we have. And so bonds are the way to pay for in the, in the duration. That might change in the future, but that's what we've got for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Arifin, you're next up on that one.
Oh, that's a definitely big concern. I mean, I hear lots of people are talking about the street. So the street is really something that we have to do, not just two years. It looks like it's going to take twenty years if we don't do it correctly. And, you know, and we have to do it really, you know, what we do asphalt or concrete. We need to really focus that if, you know, you know, whatever repair or replacement done, it will last long. And even though I see that, you know, hundred million, hundred ten million dollar proposed for the infrastructure, this proposed bond coming up and it's not really that much. If we had done this thing, you know, five years ago, it would have been much less, probably fifty, sixty million dollar. But again, anyway, we can always look back and see what could we have done. But what should we do from now on is like focus on the street, prioritize and make sure that we take care of the street that's just started deteriorating and repair those things to make sure that we stay on it. So I think the street definitely one that we have to do it really carefully and quickly.
Okay, so maybe I would suppose that everybody could agree on streets for sure. But, so we'll say, we'll, just by your nodding your head, everybody agrees on streets, right? Okay, so what might be next then? And I think, Daniel, you're up next.
Okay, great. Yeah, I would say next is, is our municipal buildings. So City Hall and Library kind of redevelopment and potential expansion is, is probably going to be the next, most likely proposal to be included in the bond. The city's already gone through multiple rounds now, presentation of options to the, to the current council and have kind of honed in on expanding the City Hall office space, which was built in the seventies for a much smaller city. And, you know, as the city's grown, the staff has needed to grow and are on top of each other right now. So using kind of re-designing the grand hall into, into some office space, it seems to be the direction that we're going. And of course, the library is also a quite old structure and is in need of redesign and HVAC work. So I think that's probably going to be the next most likely thing to require attention.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
I was already off mute. Okay, so, you know, I think something that we don't want to sleep on is maintenance. Maintenance is twenty-three percent of the budget between all the different funds that we have. I think sixty-eight million dollars, I might not be a hundred percent accurate on that number, but it's a lot of money, right? And the way that our city works right now, our revenue model, not only does it obviously not sustain our streets, as was mentioned earlier, but it, we're going to struggle to maintain a lot of our maintenance on, on everything from public facilities to parks to, to potholes. And that's why when we talk about, you'll hear, you hear the IQ being thrown around a lot as being really great. You hear redevelopment of the core, things on Spring Valley. This is all important, not just for redevelopment sake. It's important because we need that revenue as a city in the long run, so not just over the next few years. And that's what the question was. We need that money ten years, twenty years out so we can actually pay and just cover the maintenance on everything that we have. You know, that's, and I think when we talk about redevelopment, we have to remember why we're doing it. And so we can maintain all of the wonderful facilities we have as a city and maintain all of our services, right? Just the upkeep alone, the useful life is, is something that, you know, at some point it goes from being an asset to a liability for our city.
Thank you. Marilyn, if you want to unmute and...
Here we go.
Marilyn, you, you muted again.
There we go. Oh, sorry. When I think of the bond and all of the, the different areas that we're, we're, we're talking about, first of all, I need to think, I want to think of what we do with the city, with the, with the structures and with the streets and all that. I want to call it the investment for our future. We have to invest now to, to maintain these items, to get them well, so that we have them twenty-five, thirty, forty years from now and not just do a patchwork. So I'm looking for sewer lines, everything like that also underneath the ground, not just the streets on top. I think we need to really make sure we have everything in place to last for another fifty years just to start with. That's my whole purpose is investments for the future. I had another thought now, I'm trying to think of it, because I, I, I've so enjoyed all the points that have been made. And that's what the, that's what the bad and the good of a Zoom call is. You don't get to interface and dialogue and have really good, good conversations with people. But I'm, I'm excited, I love, I, I, I agree with all the, what the city has done so far, but forward-thinking of not just, not just present. I will say this, being from the north originally, being a Yankee, I know that there's, we at least are fortunate enough to have almost twelve months of construction time around here. So we have the opportunity to work on this almost year-round, whereas where I came from wasn't so lucky.
Right, yeah, that's no keep you from doing stuff. I think we all learned that in February.
True, thank you.
Okay, so thank you. So we have another question from one of our, well, participants, one of the folks here at our meeting. And the question is this, and I'm going to start this time with Arifin. The city and RISD would arguably benefit from the redevelopment of old, underperforming small multi-dwelling or large multifamily properties. Are incentives to provide developers possible and would you support that? That's kind of a long question, but I, I think it's basically again about the redevelopment, where we're going to spend money. Arifin?
Yeah, that's the, that's a great question and I think that's a deep question. Now, yes, this is something that we need to look at it. We have to look at also our long-term benefit. What we do today, is it going to bring us benefit down the road? RISD, you know, and the city that, you know, this is, this is something, we have to increase our tax base to make sure that the current homeowners, they are not really getting, you know, the pressure of paying all the tax and, and so the land that we have, we are landlocked and also that redevelopment, some of the area. Definitely, I mean, if, if that stays within our long-term planning and vision, I would support everything. And, and not, you know, like, you know, if we bring some residents, they don't pay that tax, they don't have to pay tax, the school tax, that's one of the biggest things. We have to look at that, you know, how, what portion that we can manage without, you know, like the apartments and other things. So it's, it's all cost benefit. I'm, I'm a very detailed person. I see end of the day what's really best for our, our city. And I think if the number looks good, we'll, we'll, I'll support those.
Thank you. Daniel?
Sure, thank you. It was an interesting question of, and I'll probably preface with, I probably need to do a little more study. I like data, so I would like to understand a little bit better how the, what the long-term impacts are. I agree with, with Arifin on that, that before making decisions, we need to understand. I, I've been receiving feedback even in my very brief stint as a, yeah, hopeful politician that density is, does impact the school district, but the feedback I've been getting is not in a positive way. So I'd be interested to hear maybe more what the rationale of how that could possibly benefit RISD is. But certainly, yeah, we, we need to be mindful of what, what those long-term impacts are. And I know, you know, some of the large multifamily units that are down here in my neighborhood on, you know, around Spring Valley, for a long time, they were busing kids up to Prairie Creek, because at the time Prairie Creek was not as full and the schools down here were. But now, of course, Prairie Creek neighborhood demographics have changed and they're, the neighborhood's filling the school now. So, so yeah, multifamily, you know, we, we need to really understand not just what it'll be when, when the young couples move in in the first place, but, but what the, what it will look like in twenty to thirty years and, and who will be living in those units. That's a great question. I'll, I'll have to do a little more studying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joe?
Sure, so, you know, I guess that is, you know, that's, that's a tough question. And I definitely think, I think the way the question was phrased in the chat was, would arguably be improved. And I'm sure there are people on, on each side that would argue certain points vigorously here. So, you know, because on, on one hand, right, with, we mentioned, Daniel just mentioned Spring Valley. On, on one hand, we have to remember that a lot of people that, that live in these complexes, they are Richardson residents too. You know, they maybe have been here ten, fifteen, twenty years. Yet on the other hand, you know, if you're not, when it comes to residential property development, right? And this is whether you're a homeowner or you own a huge apartment complex, if you're not constantly improving your property and keeping up with it, you're moving backwards. There really isn't a, a status point there. So, you know, I, again, it's all about specificity. And yeah, in some instances, I think that maybe with, with, for example, there's a dilapidated four-plex somewhere, our city, you know, or, or a series of dilapidated duplexes. Certainly, I don't think it's a bad idea to, to do a mixture of incentives and, and strict code enforcement to get those pushed forward and, and rebuilt and, and looking nice. You know, on the other hand, I want to be very sensitive and not, not tear down things just for the sake of tearing them down, especially if that money could be spent, better spent elsewhere to generate, if we're talking about revenue for the city and the ISD, if that money could be spent, better spent elsewhere, redeveloping our commercial centers, offering grants to small businesses, things like that.
Thank you for that. Okay, Marilyn, if you want to come off mute.
Well, when it comes to redevelopment, especially of residential, I'm a proponent of that. I believe that if there's an incentive that can be given to a developer to put in a sensible higher-density product that is attractive and is well-thought-out, possibly having a little mixed use in there with, you know, have a more high-density plus also a little bit of retail nearby. And there's a lot of factors that go into whether or not an incentive could be given to a developer like that. But I would certainly love to have Richardson open up to the idea of possibly a little bit higher density in residential. It, it checks a lot of boxes. It, it, it helps, it helps the price point for those for affordability and, and it, and it helps with the tax base, to be honest with you. It helps with the tax base. So I'm, I'm all for looking at all the options. Let's, let's be a forward-thinking city when it comes to residential.
Thank you. Kyle?
So every, every project has to be taken on its own merit. We just had, we just approved, you know, a few months ago, a, a new development along Spring Valley where it took a, where it's taken an old apartment complex of seventy homes and it's raising in and then building a new three or four-story building with approximately twice the number of units. You know, that, that didn't require incentives to do. I think when you create a, a good environment for everyone with the downtown area, IQ, Spring Valley corridor, you know, we can go on and on. Developer's going to want to come in here and redevelop without incentives. Now, I'm not opposed to them if, if they need it happen. What I would be more interested in is doing more infrastructure work so those can outlive whatever's being built there in the first place. So things like, we've done this with small businesses here and it doesn't have to be relegated to small business, but like we'll put in a larger water line or larger sewer line to accommodate business. And if we have to do something like that for a new apartment building that's replacing an old apartment building, I'm all for that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone. And this is going to be the last question. And it's something that we, we see a lot of or we hear a lot of, especially if you're paying much attention to the legislature. And it is on taxpayer-funded lobbying. I'm wondering, and we will start, Daniel, with you. What is your take on the, or your position, I should say, on taxpayer-funded lobbying? Where, what are your thoughts on that and where do you stand?
That, that's a great question. I haven't, I haven't gotten a whole, a whole lot of talk to that, honestly, but, you know, I think there's a, there is a place for, for lobbying and, you know, specific interest groups that have an initiative, they, they want to advance, you know, there, there is a need for that. But taxpayer-funding lobbying just doesn't quite line up in my mind on, on what we should be doing with our, our tax dollars. Of course, the flip side of that coin is if, if, you know, if it is a special interest group lobbying and, and there's no one counter-laborating, then, then that could, could go too far as well, I guess. But, yeah, to me, that, that doesn't seem necessarily like the But, yeah, to me, that, that doesn't seem necessarily like the best use of taxpayer dollars.
Okay. Joe, your thoughts on taxpayer-funded lobbying?
Yeah, that's definitely a tricky one. You know, on, on one hand, I feel like my thought, I think my thoughts would be that, you know, definitely, I think the city should be able to spend some of its money, right, some of its operational budget, to send people up to Austin to advocate for things on behalf of the city and on behalf of the residents. I mean, that's, that's fine. I think maybe being really intentional about how we do it is, is important. You know, making sure that we confine the topics to things specifically of municipal interest. But I don't, I don't see a huge problem with spending a reasonable amount of money going up there and having, having someone periodically up there to advocate on behalf of Richardson's interests.
Okay, thank you. Marilyn, if you want to unmute and...
My first initial comment was no way, Jose. But I do understand and appreciate the lobbying aspect because in full disclosure, I was a volunteer lobbyist for the Realtor community for eight years in Austin and in Washington DC. So my thoughts are that, yes, we do need some representation of our, of our views, probably more on a full-time basis in Austin and, and in DC. So I would definitely say a part of the budget could be spent, but not, not the lobbyists of yesteryear. Let's call it that. Okay, definitely.
Kyle?
So this is an easy question. You know, the state of Texas and, you know, I'm born and raised Tex, I love Texas. But I think they over, have been overreaching into local government the last few years. It is important that we have a lobbyist that works for the Richardson. It saves us money. Otherwise, we would have to send department heads down there for every specific bill that affects each one of our departments. It's, we have someone that does great work for the city. And it's important that our voices are heard in Austin on a regular basis. And if, without it, we're just not going to get, we're just not going to get any legislation to go our way. And so when, when people hear the word lobbyist, they think of special interests. Well, that special, special interest for us is Richardson and, and not any other kind of special interest. So it is, it is needed and it saves us money in the long run by not having to send our employees back and forth to Austin on a regular basis to get things done. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Arifin, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, yes, I would. You know, I, you know, twenty-nine years ago, I came from Bangladesh to America as a student. And I do understand, I do, you know, that, you know, every single penny is important to me. And managing those money is very important. So, and also I have become a business person eventually now. And now I understand, end of the day, we have to see that how we can save money, how we can get a product, final product that's good for us. So I'm open to all idea. Now, you know, if we keep good, you know, lobbyist is, you know, definitely something that we should look at it using some of the tax money that we, we say. But that's not really end of the day. I mean, we have to make sure that we communicate ourselves, our city, you know, the council members, our mayors communicate with Austin and, you know, wherever we need to, to keep, you know, constant pressure that this is affecting us. Lobbyist is not going to be end of our, you know, long-term solution. So we need to really engage ourselves a lot more than what we are doing as of today. And that's the things we are lacking. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you all for answering the questions. We are out of question time, but there is a minute left for, a minute or your thirty-second elevator speech left for everybody to, to answer, just kind of conclude and any, any last-minute things that you'd like to say about your candidacy. So with that, we will start with Joe, I believe. Joe, do you want to start us off?
Absolutely, thank you. So, you know, I think being on city council takes intention. It takes looking at cases on the merits, it takes specificity, but it also takes a long-term vision. And I hope through the wonderful questions you've asked us here today about redevelopment and things like that, and how we can improve our city. I hope I've demonstrated to everybody here that I have all of those things and I bring all those talents to the table. So with that, if you need to get ahold of me, my cellphone is two one oh two six oh eight three three one. My email is joe@joeforrichardson.com. Please vote for Joe Corcoran for Richardson City Council, place four. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Marilyn?
First of all, thanks to the chamber for hosting us today. I think dialogue is the most important thing that we take away from this. We have great questions, great, great comments. But I just want to restate that I've been volunteering in the city for over twenty years. And I've done so not to build my resume up to run for pub, public office, but it's because I love this city. I know that city council is hard work and I'm really ready to give more than a hundred percent of my time to listening to the citizens. Richardson has been very good to me and I promise to earn your vote. I want to reconnect neighborhoods for Richardson. And I am Marilyn Frederick, place six, Richardson City Council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marilyn. Kyle?
Well, I've served two years and love to serve more. I'm a lifelong resident, a father of two kids, so I understand what parents go through in this city. I own a small business retail open to the public, so I'm probably the most accessible person on council. See people all the time, day and night, weekends. You know, I love the city. It's been good to me. I can't imagine living anywhere else. I don't have, you know, I don't have anything in my future that would make me want to do anything more, but serve my city and my neighbor and be there every day of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Arifin?
No, that's great. Well, thanks for organizing this event, even though I apologize that I missed some portion because of technical issue. No, I mean, you know, giving back to the community is so important. I have a wonderful family. I have four children. And they have gone through the RISD and UTD. But now, you know, you know, I took every single opportunity to serve our community. I joined Leadership Richardson, Citizen Police Academy. I served on two of the board, zoning board and building commission, building and standard commission, almost ten years. And now I'm serving on Richardson Chamber of Commerce, one of wonderful task force they have created about diversity, equity and inclusion. This is the forward-thinking task force. So, so I will take every single opportunity to serve our city. And my thirty years of professional experience on civil engineering, infrastructure-related work, especially with the municipal infrastructure, I think it will add value to our city council. And I look forward to serving you. My promise to you and all the citizens that I'll work hard and make good decision for our city. I want to be your voice at the city hall. Thank you.
Thank you. And Daniel, we'll close with you and then Bill Sproul will, has a couple of announcements. So, Daniel?
Excellent, thank you. And yeah, thanks again for, for hosting this event. It's great, great to be able to speak directly to, to my fellow chamber members. But if elected to city council, my priorities are what I refer to as the four I. Infrastructure, we've already talked about, is ongoing need in the city. And we must continue to support maintenance and modernization for our streets and alleys. Innovation is also key to Richardson being a, staying a vibrant city. And I support and love the effort that's going into the IQ, which will invite and inspire new businesses to start and stay in Richardson. Involvement is also a key to a successful city. And that has served both Catherine and I very well to, you know, find ways to get involved. And we love serving and giving back to the community that, that provides a lot to us. So, and we want to encourage the same for our neighbors and coworkers. And finally, inclusion. Richardson's a very diverse city in a number of ways, a number of aspects. And we really want to play a part in making sure that we, that Richardson is a place that we're all proud to call home. So I am running for place six and would love to have your support. For those that haven't had a chance to meet in person, shoot me an email at daniel@birdetteforrichardson.com. We're glad to meet up. Early voting starts next Monday, so turn out and vote, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sproul, take it away.
Liz, first of all, thanks for moderating today's session. Thanks for all the city council candidates for participating. Thanks to my board members who I see in abundance that are here today. Thanks to the mayor and the existing council members, Councilman Doobie, Councilman Solomon, Councilman Hutcherson Rider, Councilman Mitchell that all joined us today. We appreciate it. As Daniel just alluded, early voting starts on Monday of next week and goes through Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. And election day is on Saturday, May the first. So remember to get out and vote, vote early and do the Chicago-style vote often. We have begun in the chamber, meeting in person again. In fact, last week, our weekly business networking group, which meets at the Drury Hotel, began meeting in person. We had almost forty people there this morning. It starts at seven fifteen AM in the morning. It is like speed dating and just a great way to network and do business with each other. Next Wednesday, the twenty-first, we will have our monthly Growth and Mobility luncheon featuring Representative Dart, giving an update on the Silver Line, which used to be called the Cotton Belt Line, that's being built. And then a week after next, we will have our federal legislative policy briefing on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, and Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. We'll have Senator Cornyn, Representative Van Taylor, Representatives of the FCC, you know, other congressional offices. We'll have a briefing from the US Chamber Policy People. And these are all briefings related to the business agenda in Washington DC. So I really appreciate your attendance today. And with that, thanks again to the candidates, thanks to all the people who serve our city so well, and we are adjourned. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much for hosting this. Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.